2017, and so we're in our discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The handouts that you got at the 11th meeting on the 11th were strictly last year, or this current year versus what we're proposing for 18. And so we'll walk on through our Power Point. And the Power Point's just an overview. Then we'll get into the extraction when we pull our numbers out of assist and place them into the worksheet that was provided, the base that was provided by the TCQ compliance officer, or compliance contractor, was it four or five years ago? And so we've been working off of that for the last few years. And that was to make sure that our rates were addressing our infrastructure issues to get us out of, to work to get us out of any kind of...
Violations.
Violations, good word of the day. Okay, so, and we're good for recording. So 2017, 18 fiscal year enterprise fund budget. What makes up the enterprise fund? Water, wastewater, and solid waste. Variables in making up the rate to be able to offset our expenditures, expenses and costs, our numbers of customers and their meter equivalents depending on if it's commercial, residential. Yes, sir? Yeah, I'll actually stand directly in front of the camera. So, yeah, thanks Brad. So, yeah, so meter equivalents, alternative revenue, fees and charges, and we'll get further into that as we get into the Power Point. Number of gallons sold annually, and that's based on an average and a projection as well. Our base rate, which is where we try and guarantee the monies that we want to bring in because typically when we enter into the budget in October, we're finishing out the summer. So that's our high end, that's when our, the majority of our revenue comes in on the gallons used time. So we need a certain amount of money to be able to operate until we get into the next summer every year. Because if we do it like other cities, it's a larger gamble. And we'll get into that once we get into the rate sheet. And that, but that's, makes up the base rate. And then the tiered volume rate is for the consumers, commercial, manufacturing, the consumers that actually use more water than just a residential meter typically pay a higher rate because they're consuming more freshest commodity. So go ahead, Jennifer, we'll move on to the next one. Do want to point out financial highlights from the audit that was presented this year, talking about how we've been doing over time, trending in the right direction. And so page 14 from this year's audit, financial highlights, fund statements, water and sewer. In fiscal year 16, we ended out, we ended up 165,608 to the negative, and this is our unrestricted net position. So this is, this is the total of all. This isn't, we're not operating in a total of net negative fund balance. This is our total net position. But the year before, fiscal year 15, we're at 297,279. So we're, we almost, we almost improved our net position by 50% because of what we've been actively doing to improve our infrastructure, to put money towards depreciation, which we'll get into that, which typically our goal is that 94,000 that we budget every year to try and put towards it, but we actually did, did a little bit better in, on our budget. So the reduction of the negative balance in the amount of 131,611 resulted from rate increases. There's no, there, there are no, this is, this is a snapshot taken from auditor. There are no reserves at fiscal, fiscal year 16, which may be used to meet the funds ongoing obligations. And three to six months reserves optimal, and if you remember back from the audit, those of y'all that were in attendance, we did excellent on the general fund side. We did excellent on the, on the water wastewater side, but we've got a longer way to go. But on the general fund side, we actually achieved that goal of that, the three, three months minimum, and we'd like to get closer to six months over time because as the city grows and our funds grow, we want, we want to be able to have that protection. So go ahead, Jennifer. So funding, water and wastewater sales make up $2,541,519. Our fees such as tap fees, impact fees, late fees, connections, interest on the accounts make account for 493,693. And then our sanitation contract is 200,000. And of course, we, Council elected to, we went through the RFP, got five, was it four or five sanitation contracts in, and elected to let go of public, bring in sanitation solutions. And, and so that, that will be money in, money out, the 200,000. But for a grand total of 3,236,220. And that's on, on the funding side. On the expenditure side, on water, we anticipate expending 1,699,563. On the sewer side, 1.5 million, 36,659 for a grand total of 3,236, uh, 236,222. And so that'll make up the total. We'll, we'll work into the breakouts of those numbers. But that's, those are the grand totals as far as money in, money out that we anticipate.
Frank, where does that number go? Where does that number show up on this?
Okay, when I, when we get in, when we get further in, I'll, I'll show you.
So I should be saying...
Well, this is the total breakout. So what we'll do, what we'll do is we'll get...
Water and sewer is combined here, but they're separate in your packet.
So this, what I, what I gave you, when we gave you the packet, that's our assist. That's what we plug into assist whenever we're going to work through the fiscal year as far as our numbers are concerned. When you get into...
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, it's this plus this?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was like, I was looking at the back where it said contract services.
It's 1.5 plus 1.7. I got it. Yep, now we're back.
Okay, good. Okay, go ahead, Jennifer. Okay, so the funding breakdown of the revenues and fees, the impact fees alone, we anticipate 374,000. The tap fees, 11,803. And the reason it numbers lower is because instead of us putting on additional staff to compensate, pay benefits for, to be able to do these taps, we put the burden back on the developer. And so typically we do very little taps that frees up our staff to be able to take care of more tasks as, as the community increases. So we're not trying to put on more staff just to take care of taps. So that, that revenue will be, will continue to be low unless we change velocity and we decide that we're going to start doing the taps. We do witness them, so the taps are good. It's just we're not doing the work. We're, we're allowing the contractor to do it, and we witness the tap.
Do you want us to just wait for questions until we get down into the details here? So we'll be talking about tap fees again?
Yes, ma'am, we can get back down to tap fees. And so Lynn will be helping, Steve will be helping, just kind of do it right now, trying to do that 20,000 thing. So the connection fees, 31,100. Late penalties, 55,000. And interest income off of our accounts, 2,800. And then miscellaneous revenue is 2,000, or 20,000. As far as sales are concerned, water, we plan to sell 1,320,474. Wastewater, we plan to sell 1,221,46. And then solid waste is that 200,000 again. So those are those numbers, fees and sales equal total revenue. Go ahead, Jennifer. And if we're looking at it from pie chart perspective as far as trying to gain understanding, because everybody learns a little bit different, on the funding side, if you look at it, can everybody see it? It's kind of...
I can't see the percentage, but I can see...
Okay, so, okay, so water sales, on the water...
What is that percentage?
Yes, ma'am. So on, on the water fund side, 78% of the revenue is made up by water sales. Tap fees make up less than, less than 1%. Impact fees make up 16%. Impact, other makes up that 6%, that miscellaneous, and then, yeah, that was it. So...
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Go back to tap was less than one.
Tap fees, yes, ma'am. So remember that 11,000 that was on the last page?
Well, what was the next one?
Okay, so the next one, under it is impact fees, and that's that 16%.
Impact.
Yes, ma'am. So that's whenever developer comes in and builds, they're paying for that impact that they create to the system.
I just couldn't see the percentage.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
And the last one, the 6%.
Last one is others, the miscellaneous that we had in the, in the previous slide.
Okay.
When we get to the sewer fund, sales make up 80% of the revenue. Solid waste makes up 13%. Impact fees make up 7%. And again, tap fees make less than 1%. On the water fund, on the expenditure side, salaries make up 13%. Depreciation makes up 3%. Debt service makes up 39%. Capital purchases are 3%. And then maintenance and operations is 42. On the sewer fund side, salaries make up 16%. Depreciation is 3%. Debt expenses are 17. Capital expenditures are 16%. And maintenance operations 48%.
I really liked the pie.
Okay.
But I'd like a copy of it.
Sure, okay.
If it's in this.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is what I was going to request that we do anyway.
Okay.
Because this is the way I understand it.
I think that recommendation came out last year, so to do a pie to try and...
Very good, I would like a copy of both the pie.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Now, I'm going to ask a really basic question.
Sure.
When does, what does our, when does our fiscal year start?
October 1st.
October.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, go ahead, Jennifer. Okay, so we're getting into capital expenses. Steve will be able to articulate what it is that we plan to expend money on this year. Not all of these things are going to be paid directly out of pocket. We're going to try and do some, we're getting some quotes on some leases and some... What, ideas of financing on that, on some of these purchases?
In addition to the Public Works building to the, we move, being planning to move to the wastewater plant. We have 18 acres down there. Costs us 335,000. This building, we replace the existing Public Works building. This building is crumbling and very safe. We actually had to put boards up on that side to the roof. At the variable speed drive motor at well number five is 43,000. This, this drive system, drive reduces the starting load lifting water from 1,300 feet. This will prevent motor and pump from failing. We experienced a failure in the last five years, almost every year.
How much is the, does it cost whenever you experience a failure like that?
128,000, what this last year's.
So this will be my well spent sound like.
The video with well one and three, both of those wells went down this year. We want to find out what the problem is. These are continuous failures. We want to go down and video the screen and make sure there's no holes, make sure it needs cleaning, or what we need before we want to spend the money on that repairs. Cathodic protection for well number three, well five, and well six. This is an ongoing process. This, we're almost finished up all the wells. This is a process to reduce electrolysis, movement of water through the metal caused by, causing tanks to rust, saving long-term coatings and paint costs. Manhole repairs and lining, 35,000. City receives lower amount of inflow and infiltration through the brick and limestone, lime board manholes. City wants to repair the lines and repair these manholes, keep the city in compliance with TCQ, prevent violations. Replace an existing backhoe is 94,000. This is aging, 2006 case backhoe, high maintenance problems. Repair sluice gates at US 75 lift station, it's big, 2,000. These gates shut off flow to the lift station chambers from the system to the pumps. They're used to remove the flow and allow work to be put on motors and valves and control equipment down in the lift station. Conversion of asphalt truck to a dump truck for 17,000. This equipment was purchased prior to December 12, 2012. It was designed for a very small crew. It designed to work in very small manholes. The city streets are in need, rubber basis, that's what Grayson County crews are improving. Once this truck is fitted with dump bed, it'd be placed in the, once it replaced the one it was here, its own loss. It, it will be a 1960, the truck we have now is a 1968 Ford, and with parts no longer available. Obamacare took, Obama took care of that, it's scrapped all of mine.
Is this the one that, that we got? You said it was 2012. Have we actually used it?
It has a lot of problem in operations.
Did we, we never really could have used it, did we?
The asphalt truck is probably what you're talking about. We don't, we haven't had the staff to be able to...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We've got that asphalt truck, so you're like, hey, let's switch it out and get a dump.
Use something I can use. I've got a 1968 dump truck. Like I said, we can't get parts, or we can't even get throttle cable for it because it's all scrapped out.
Yeah, I have a 1011 budget.
Yes. Public Works direct to vehicle. I drive a work truck right now, and I need another work truck, so I'm going to go to a smaller vehicle, move the dump, work truck over to the crew. And it's 27,000. The wastewater operations is 75,000. This year's operating cost to date for last year was, for this year was 90,000. These expenditures will be used for extraordinary repairs at wastewater plant and not foreclosed in the budget. It's a lot of fun for us, foreseeing repairs for the next 12 months.
This is, this is a...
And this, we're...
A shit bucket is what this is?
It's what?
Pushing.
Well, no, it...
No, that's, that's what we, we use 90,000 this year to keep it operational.
And in the budget, zero. So if we had to pull 90,000 out of other...
I'm not using it in a derogatory, because I know stuff comes up. So it is the unforeseen bucket.
It is.
Based on your prior experience.
Yes, and we can't go down at all. If we go down, then we're in violation.
On the plane, on the operate, on the operation of the plant, yes. The plant quits, the plant quit, if the plant goes down, quits work.
I thought you meant down and money, I was like...
In operation.
Okay, gotcha.
Thanks. I am so glad that you're working on the Public Works building. However, I do have a question about it.
Okay.
On this, I have noticed, now, this price that you have, the 335, in here we have the engineering and a half for the design of the Public Works building. I don't understand, is this 14,000, is it included in this price? It's something that is separate?
It's in engineering costs.
Okay, and in the engineering cost, is from half of the design?
Well, we're doing half out of water, half out of sewer.
Okay. So back here on the back, I didn't realize it said for either one.
Yes, ma'am, we split it because that's both forms.
Well, I, I understand that it just says this one, I thought for everything, so I didn't understand that. So that doesn't mean that other either. I don't think you're doing this a minute too soon.
This page at the back has nothing to do with what you just put up there.
Which...
Contract services or...
Yes, ma'am, so I break out of contract services, so the biggest, identify what exactly makes up contract services in there.
Okay, right here, it says...
So 705 is going to be sewer, 701 is water. So right here's, 701 is, is the code for water, and 705 is the code for sewer. And then 6703 is the code for contract services. And so when you go back over to your breakout, 6703 is contract services. And then what's on that page should total this amount right here.
Okay, but this isn't what Steve's putting us right now.
No, so what, okay, so, no, contract services, these are capital expenditures.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's why I was like...
Just, this 14 is included in this, right?
No, ma'am.
Engineering services?
This is, this is, this is engineering, this number, this number is coming out of sewer?
Uh-huh, where is it up here?
It is in one, this is water.
So the other half, does it come out of water?
No, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to extend the money where it takes place. Okay, so the money that we're doing is the engineering for half of the Public Works building, the 14,000, you should see...
Yeah, fine. That's my ask if it was included in something.
It's probably included in the 35,000. So we should have done the breakout.
Because there's no breakout part because it's the same as it was this year.
That's a good question.
So I don't understand.
We can, we can update that, we can work it out.
So the, okay, so she's asking about the 335 as a capital, but you have...
Yes, ma'am, so that's...
Some of the items over here for contract part, which is...
Yes, ma'am, so that's, that's, that's on the design portion?
Right.
And then that'll be on the construction.
But I cannot find one, so we're going to break it out.
We'll have to break it out and give you an updated sheet.
So it's not the total project cost we're looking at, we're just looking at the capital?
Yes, ma'am, the capital portion of it.
And here's the expenses.
Well, he's going to give us an update, you know, this one right here.
Yeah, that was, the numbers, the numbers are correct, yeah. So strictly what you send out a new sheet, the engineering will say general services, and it'll also say the other half of the design for the Public Works building.
Good. Thank you.
But we don't have just a sheet that says, we're doing project, here's project X, here's capital, here's money. We don't have expenses.
I guess what she's saying is we don't have a copy of what's on the, up here, on the string.
For every project, there's going to be capital costs and there's going to be expenses. We don't have a view to that. That's why we're looking at two separate things.
As far as the total cost, yes.
We're looking at this, and then we're looking at this and going over here.
So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to identify exactly where it's coming out of the budget. As opposed to looking at it from a project based...
Yeah, which would, which would be half because of the cash out, right?
Well, yes, once you get to it. So what, what'll end up happening is when we get to the expenditure, because it's over 50,000, it will come back to before we sign, before either I or the mayor or whoever signs the loan, that project will come back before council. Even though it's in the budget, it's over 50,000 for council approval. So at that point, you'll see...
But I don't want to get to that point and not understand the total project cost.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, is it's a cash out thing. I'd like to know if the project wasn't 335, it's, and is it just 335 plus 20? Now, that's right first, 14, it'd be 14 and 14.
Half for the design, Public Works building. No. You got, you got the port on the structure, engineering's going to do the site work, correct? So 28,000 plus the 335?
It is 28, that's right.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, I kept saying pipe first. No, that is 28 for pipe first.
28 for pipe first.
That's not part of it.
No, it's just the 14.
And we'll see the other 14 whenever, I can send another sheet that's...
Give us an update.
In the general services.
You should have thought of a project sheet, look at capital and then expenses.
I do have a concern about that, but I just realized that.
You do have.
I don't follow this. It's the best idea I've come up with. What's the blowback to that?
That's the county road, so it's actually, it's a fair shade, it's a...
I mean, after where this building's signed?
What the county has agreement with us, keep it graded. I mean, it's not that bad.
Graded?
We looked at, trying to take some milling that we had and the building that they had, but our milling was shorter than what they needed, and their, their projects are taking place all the time, and it opened up with a belt there like that, to build at this time. I only, I only have the road out to the building. Once you get to, what's that?
Under the road.
Yeah, at, past that is owned by the city.
Yes. It used to be a something there that you moved and you came to the city.
Yes.
Is it still there? That's not important. Want to make sure you don't have to come back and say, oh, we can't get to it.
I mean, we, we move a gravel on it, we can't get to it. Where we can't drive on it. So we're, we had the county come in once a month, and they graded all the way through our gates. Of course, where you're going down, this facility will be by, by where the new police and family already is. We have an area between there, you will go to point two fences to get by.
I mean, all for it, just want to make sure you don't have to come back and say, oh, we can't get to it.
I use, I usually prefer, I mean...
We want to make sure you get it.
We've been, we've been pretty effort on our folks and everything in the last five years.
You have to answer for it.
My, that's not a problem.
If you're stuck.
Okay.
Well, then, as, well, of course, they're still outside the city, but I was going to say, as the adjacent property develops, we need them to build that, build or eschew half the road.
Yeah, but we're, we're talking that today.
Oh, I know, I understand, it's to be this budget here, right? Well, actually, there are two, there are two lots that actually have been planted or being planted right now on Spain Road, so it's starting to fill in.
Just making sure it's adequate.
Do cathodes on the wells get, do they have to be replaced every year, or the cathodes, the cathode?
The cathodic protection is checked, I have a contract with a company that installs it. They come in once a year, they run the, put a meter on there, see how much of the anodes are left. If they have to replace them, if it gets below 45%, then they'll replace them, and then they'll rebuild them. But we do have a contract with them.
And, and, right, this is the installation of the first anodes on that? So this is the more expensive part, when they come back to do the replacement, all they're going to do is replace the lead anode itself. So it becomes a maintenance issue more than it's, you know, a couple thousand dollars versus, and it's every couple of years, or maybe five years, they have to replace them.
And I'm going to see if I can use this correctly. I mean, my experience with doing budgets is there's a whole mentality behind it. So is this budget actually constructed based on bare bones? Are we starting to be able to move towards a little bit more of a proactive stance? Where are we at on our...
These items are listed above bare bones. Everything else is bare bones except...
So we are moving to not, we're out of firefighting mode?
Well, no.
That's, that's where I'm kind of going. I mean, how much of what you have to do now is still firefighting versus starting to get a little bit ahead of the problem?
The manhole repairs and lining, that's my biggest problem right now. All right, each year, we, we whittle it down each year. When I got here, we were flowing 700 gallons a minute on a half inch rainfall. I'm only allowed 600 gallons a minute maximum. This, last year, we thought we had them all fixed, we pipe burst the outfall all the way from the city to reduce the infiltration into the, into that. That reduced it, and then all of a sudden this spring, we're back at 1400 gallons per minute.
Okay, and you're always supposed to be 600?
Yes.
600 is what we're per minute. And you're allowed to go over for...
A short period.
More, no more than six hours, but...
And so we got to find where all the water's coming from. That's the reason you see a pipe burst of Jefferson Street in there on engineering. Now, we don't have the funds for it this year, but we do the engineering. We're going to do manhole and lining repairs, 35,000. The cathodic protection is a prevented because when I got here, there was no, there was no cathodic protection on anything. The video in the wells, we've been guessing in the past, put a pump in, let's get the water flow. Now we want to see what the problem is, and then make a real good choice on what we need to fix it. And that way, we're not spending 43,000 to 78,000, 128,000 a year on wells. This year, we lost three wells. It put us in a real bad bind.
Well, and that's when we started using the CGMA water.
Stinking water.
Although I have to admit, it hasn't been stinking near as much as something you did last six weeks.
We're back on well water.
Are we still on well?
You're back on well.
The sluice gate, when I got here, the lift station was in severe depreciation deterioration. We can't change, shut between the gates, there are actually the gases in there, have eaten the metal, but anything that's in a sewer, if it's not stainless steel, it doesn't stay. The manholes don't stay. We have manholes eaten out. The more in the bricks that's in the manholes are gone.
So we've got, we've got some pictures that we'll show you a little bit later about the manhole.
Yeah, I have a good idea, I got to go around this.
But I mean, it's, we are proactive. I mean, we're replacing and pipe bursting what we can. Pipe bursting is underground technology where you don't have to disturb everything. And that can actually increase the size without tearing up everything.
And the reason I asked you is, I know you're doing hurricane efforts, and I appreciate[1772.82] And the reason I asked you is, I know you're doing herkerine efforts, and I appreciate it. I'd love to get your story out there, but, I mean, listening to you right now, it's a struggle for me to keep up.
Yeah, well-
And follow the conversation.
Yes.
I think it would be really great if we could summarize in some simple way that would go in the mayor's letter, that says something about, you know, break it out by the basics that someone like me would understand. I mean, I do, I do appreciate that, I don't remember anything breaking a whole bunch in the last year or so compared to what we had when you first painted, you know. But, but I think it's important if we could summarize, you know, here's what, I can't think of what the categories would be, but I know I can appreciate about wells. You've mentioned this thing about manholes, which the only reason that came to mind is that year we finally had flooding I'd never seen before, and the manholes were blown out. You know, some sort of category that says, hey, these are the things. We've gotten ahead on actually being more protective about this. This one, we're still in a stance of, you know, trying to stay ahead. But I think it would be a fantastic story if you can figure out how to break it down for me in terms I can understand, because I only have little things where I, I know you're doing a lot of great stuff.
The thing about man, I mean, sewer, it's underground, no by season.
Yeah, but you can work it, you know, when it would be, you can work it in with the water.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, I agree with her to agree, because I think this is the best time to do it, because we were, as we were talking about compliance, and when we had October with the water, there were a lot of compliance. You know, you could check and repair, now you better use conditioner, or you can't even, and it stinks and all of this. So I think it's important that, and especially since we're at rates and everything, but I think it's important that they know that we are doing the manhole repairs, and what kind of maintenance that we're doing to preserve a lot of this, the protection for the wells, and the video inspection, all of this. I think it, I think it helps when the people understand it, and I think it's a good time for them to understand it, and know that we're doing preventative things as well as just going out fixing every leak that pops up. So in that respect-
To give you a perspective on the manholes, we've done two rounds of smoke testing.
But see, that's what I'm talking about. That's for us.
Yeah.
I'm talking about everybody out there, that I think it would be real good to tell them. I could just have an entire thing about the water.
Does balance the stinky water, because it's terrible to summarize everything you're doing by the fact that I can't stand my water now. That's not fair, because I know you're doing some things, but if we could summarize it, and that's an excellent point, balance it with, hey, look at all the other things, and you haven't heard about us digging up streets as much, and, you know, all these other things, so.
Well, the story on the manholes and all that, where I was going, Steve and I, I got here about six months before Steve did, the ion hybrides, the inflow infiltration he's talking about, the rain comes and it goes directly in and it floods. It's clean storm water that gets diluted and goes to the plant, but the plant has to pick up all of it and treat it. And we consider the ion i factors by factors. A tight system, like City of Dallas, a big system, or a tight system, has a ion i peaking factor of about three. Okay, so that means their average flow is two hundred thousand gallons per-
If you put a little picture in the little thing, I'd probably appreciate it better. Are you saying that the rainwater goes into our sewer system?
Right there.
They have to process it?
That's what-
I didn't put that in that letter. If the mayor is willing to take the focus on the water department, I would try to make it an extremely positive.
I appreciate how that's not good, right? They're not supposed to miss.
No, and we've been fighting this for five years since Frank came on. I came on right after Frank was here, Frank brought me in. And this is not my first time at this, so,
Thank goodness.
So we've looked at it, and we looked for what caused the problem, and we spent six months going around all the manholes in the city, and see if we could find problems. We fixed a lot of them ourselves, but then it didn't last very long, so it just keeps increasing. And that's where we brought in a smoke professional, Jim Ford's come in, give a flow on that manhole, and see what that flow is, and see if it increases when it rains, and then do a smoke test, and then we see where the leaks are.
So yeah, we've got, but a good, the tight system is, okay, his average flow-
No, I know. I mean, the point that you're trying to make to me is that the rainwater's not supposed to mix in with your sewer.
Right, but every city has that problem, because there's always leaks in the sewer, and so it's-
Sure, sure.
And a good system has a peaking factor, so Steve's average flow is about two hundred gallons a minute right now, and he's permitted at six hundred, so we got, and a good-
I just think you got a great story there, that the tough thing for you is to break it down for me.
Well, I know, yeah.
But I think it's an excellent time to put it out there.
Tight systems, three to one. When Steve and I got here, your peaking factors were twelve to one.
Sure they were.
And now, now they're averaging anywhere in the five and six range, so we've got-
And that's great.
And we've got half of it done, but we still got another-
I was running on the premise that we'll do it later.
Huh?
Here's what's passed.
Yes, in the past, that's how it was passed. We'll do it later.
And I think that's the other important part of the story, is to say that we've moved past a hundred percent firefighting to-
We're trying to be proactive.
Yeah, and we've picked categories that we've been able to actually move ahead.
Okay.
Alright, so yeah, we're going to move on into the rate, and this is pulling the numbers that you got in your sheets for the closed budget, and moving them over into the spreadsheet that creates the utility quotes.
Yeah, Paul, if you pull out this set of sheets right here.
When is it better to ask about the line item expenditures?
What line item?
Before or after we talk about how this is going to stand as far as revenue?
Probably after we get to the rate.
Okay.
Okay, what you're seeing, this is, the blue column here is the water fund, the green, the next sheet has got the green column, that's the sewer fund. If you notice, all the line items down the upper left are the line items that you see in your budget, the numbers match. Those are, so all we're doing is categorizing all the expenses. It should be, it should be in one-on-one correspondence. I'm in trouble if there isn't, but I think that's it. And then, what I'm showing you here is the next section down below the expenses. This is the consolidation of how the rates are made. And if you look-
Yes.
Okay, you get down to the second portion of that, here's your one point six nine nine on expenses. Is that, I don't know what color that is.
It's yellow, that's total expense.
It's right there, and then the next couple columns down are your alternative revenues, which are the impact fees and tap fees, or the two seventy, and then the other fees, miscellaneous fees in the water fund are equal to one oh eight, which means that leaves you, that's on the lower, that's on this lower half of the same sheet.
Okay, got it.
Okay. I'm just working, the upper part is all the expenses, and then the lower part is where the rate starts.
Are you really telling me that, I mean, it is, it's ninety-six percent is all fixed? There's none of your expenses that are really variable?
Yeah, that, yeah. It's pretty much that way. Overtime, overtime, and-
Now, tap fluctuates.
And miscellaneous payroll, yeah. I mean, that's, those are the costs that were done by TCEQ, and we went through there, doing that. For instance, the overtime, Steve's run out of budget on that, so basically, he's got his work forty hours, and he has extra days off during the week.
Interessity doesn't change based on usage?
It's a little bit true.
No, but I mean, it doesn't fluctuate the usage of it, doesn't fluctuate based on the amount of water flow?
No, the sewer plant uses the same amount no matter what the flow is.
Okay, flow?
It just, it'd be variable based upon if they have a rating or anything like that.
We set up a diagram we'd like to put out there. It's pretty interesting. It's not going to chemistry, so.
Okay.
But it'll help you understand what's running and what isn't.
We don't have to wear that rubber suit, do we?
No, no. There's a safe portion you can go out there and do that.
No, but I was married, personally, I gave the same at my doorway. I have a question that I don't understand on this budget, and it's down number eight on the side, it says fifteen miscellaneous payroll, fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two. Over here, it says reimbursed salaries expense.
Yes.
It's reimbursed salaries expense.
The permit clerk, or the utility billing clerk? Utility billing clerk is paid for out of the general fund, so this is paying the salary for the work she does for the utilities.
So we have to put it-
You have to, I have to expense it out of where-
She was not listed as an employee.
She is.
She's one of the three.
She's on the general fund, she's on the general fund side.
But what I'm getting at is here, she is not listed as one of the three.
No.
So she is what, now explain that one more time. She is the utility billing clerk.
The utility billing clerk is actually in the sewer, correct? You know, she's not in there?
I have her in the water.
Yeah, in the water. Okay, so utility billing clerk's in the water.
I got it.
Then, the reimbursed salaries is for finance clerk, admin assistant, and a portion of the city clerk.
Right. Then I'm not looking at the same thing, because it's over here, it's for miscellaneous payroll, but over here, it's underwater, but what all is it?
Yeah, utility billing clerk, but it's reimbursing for a portion of that. The finance clerk handles your POs, the admin assistant, and the city clerk.
So you're cross-charging the use of somebody else in another department?
Right, yes.
Okay, so this is salary from another department that you're moving over to be part of this?
The utility, because of the amount of work that's actually done in the utility versus administration.
Okay, you've got your charity finance PO, and what else did you say?
And the city clerk.
And the city clerk?
Yep.
That's all over, and that's-
He didn't do that until seventeen.
There was nothing in two thousand seventeen this year.
It was just, it is identified at the very bottom of the water sheet and transfers out. It's more appropriate to be in the reimbursed salary expense, so we just moved it up there.
Other than the auditor, I should recommend you move it.
Where are the sheets?
Transfers out, so usually transfers out, personal transfers out.
So it's forty-four, there's sixty-four a year, twenty-four.
What is that, like, two, you're talking about two people's time?
We're talking about-
Cold.
No, sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
It's a portion, it's not even half. It's a portion of finance, admin, and city clerk.
That's roughly, one and a half FTE, full-time employees, full-time workers?
No, it's just a percentage. I don't feel like it's a percentage of what it is.
I'm just saying, could I hire somebody to do that job?
Probably for the sixty.
For sixty-five thousand dollars, how many people does that really, you're telling me only-
You're talking about the POs that are processed for the finance clerk? You're talking about the POs that come in, the admin assistant processes? You're talking about the utility billing questions that are answered and handled by the city clerk? I mean, you've got, you've got multiple duties that are handled, whether the utility billing clerk's actually there or not?
And this is a distinct percentage of each one of them?
I understand it is numerous people on the admin side, but you're saying part of the time you're doing is actually for water, for water, right, whatever?
Yeah, water is in-
Right. I understand it's a percentage of their time, but when I add their percentages together, you get sixty-five thousand dollars a salary. That equals at least one person, one full person plus some, if not two. So I'm asking, could you not hire a full-time person to take on all those responsibilities that you have your admin people doing, that they can be assigned over here?
Why would you do that? Why would you break that? If you have the tasks that are handled by the personnel, I mean, POs are not, it's not something to have the checks and balances. You have POs handled by different personnel entering the system to balance the finances of the water sewer utilities that's handled by the finance clerk.
So what's left out of this, right? Sixty-five thousand dollars subtracted from the admin salaries. How much is left over there?
I'll see, yeah. And once we get to the general fund side, I'll show you. But I mean, it's, I can send it out to you.
I guess where I'm going is, I know you're cross-charging salaries, but the salaries in the rate work, but sixty-five's pretty significant, and I want to know what's left, because I'm like, why keep doing percentages of a person? Why not assign a full person? They really have to be split among the three.
Because you have things that are siloed, that you need to be handled by different people. That way, you don't get it where you're doing, you have one person doing the tasks, and they end up not being checked, they're not being checked.
Okay, so this is checks and balances?
Checks and balances on the system, yes. So it's POs, it's handling financial reports, it's handling all the different elements.
Oh, same tasks you're just assigning across?
How one person cannot do it?
One person, one person. I don't see how, but the problem that you run into is, if you don't have the checks and balances in the system to where you break out the different, the different tasks, then you have opportunity for one person to create malfeasance, or impropriety, or one of these elements that you don't want to. So you have different people handling different tasks within administrative department. Administrative department, I don't have the general fund budget with you. If you look under salaries on the statement that you were given for the Tuesday meeting, then it'll show you what's budgeted for administrative salaries on general fund, and general fund will be for another. And so that will, on administration, so that will be myself, city clerk, admin assistant, finance clerk.
So it's about half of your corporate times are spent on water?
I'd say more than that, but we're not trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to pay what we can out of-
A little bit more than that, like sixty percent of their time is spent on-
Oh, it's, yeah, it's more than that, because so much more, so much more is done with utilities. Because if you think about it-
That's our big revenue.
Well, but it's also your major expense, too. Think about all the pipe that's around, everything that they have to do every day, all that has to be checked up on. Work orders, different systems, all of that's kept at city hall. So the main thing is, you have these administrative tasks delegated out, but the problem you run into is, instead of raising property taxes to account for that, you make sure that over time, as the utility rate increases, and as you get that broader base, you're putting more of that percentage in the right spot.
Right, right. I mean, if you're over fifty percent now, it's almost like you could put just their salaries over there, cross-charge it back to add, because admin's a smaller percentage of their time.
Yes.
I mean, because admin's, admin's rather greedy looking, and you just kind of told me, well, the three quips I have really spend a majority of their time on water sewer.
They spend a lot of time on it. So it really depends. So like during budget, like right now, a lot of administrative time is spent on doing the numbers and making it all fit, and making it work, whereas it's administrative time. Now, right now, we do it on water sewer, have we been here on water sewer? We've been placing emphasis on water sewer, and once we get the numbers back on that for warrant taxes that are fixed, then we'll be in the general fund.
I'm just thinking, the majority of their time is water sewer, I don't just put it over there and have a cross-charge over on the admin, but I-
I guess there's any chance then the paperwork being done after the public's public reports? Other than the-
Now, Steve does a lot of compliance.
Every time I go to get to talk with a public board, I think it's leaving for paper work. And that's no exact way-
So you have Steve doing compliance work?
So, so he is always tied up with that. Yeah, I guess that's where I was getting at. So there's no, none of these, there's no way that could be a member of the employee going there to do any of these things, this all has to be done at city hall.
Apparently, yes, yeah. So, and I would recommend it at the state city hall. That way, funds, finances, record keeping, and all of that, be at city hall, because it goes in the server, it goes in the vault, it's a paperwork fixed document. That way, we have, I mean, he talked about the status-
They're not doing administrative stuff, they're actually doing the money, but the purchasing and the-
Yes ma'am.
All the financing. They're not actually collecting or doing admin.
In the compliance reports, once he turns them in, once we receive them back, we keep those records. He keeps an electronic record, but we also try and keep a paper record as well, so that way we have some.
Do you actually break your time, do you think that? How do you break your time?
I do it, I do it.
Well, not you, we know where your salary is coming. How do the clerks break up their time? Does your time track?
Just strictly by task. I mean, right now, we don't have, I mean, we don't have anybody to?
So how do you come up with the percentage breakup for the cost?
I'll just have to do it by what, it won't be by time. It'll be strictly finance as far as what are, what are we paying for at the general fund? What are we paying for and form out of the?
It's just sort of an estimate.
It's your best estimate of how much time they're spending? It's not like you've got record keeping and they go, I did ten hours for water to sleep. Okay, that's the question.
That's the only question I had.
Okay. Okay, so Lynn, I don't know if you can get into the detail.
I want to, the one point six nine nine is your total expenses and that's the revenue we need to create. Here are your miscellaneous funds, your impact and your TAP fees. Is that two, I have to bring out my phone. Is that two seventy, seven thousand? The one oh nine is the other miscellaneous fees, which means that we need to, the remainder of that needs to be done in sales. We saw that seventy-eight percent of that pie chart, that's what, that's what created that seventy-eight percent, is we've got to get the one point three two oh into water sales to make this budget work, to balance it.
Although actually, because I'm going to keep asking this, because I kind of know how your thing works. I don't understand that impact fee revenue because you carry a hundred and ten, so it's gone at the beginning. So I think there's two parts to the question. It's going from eighty-eight to one ten because of growth expectations?
Yes.
Okay, but the other part is, is this year you've actually only spent thirty percent of your budget. It should be down to have it spent actually on like seventy percent, seventy-five percent of your budget. So why, why are you asking for a hundred and ten when year-to-date you've only spent twenty-six? Or not spent, nor received twenty-six?
Are you in the sewer fund or?
I'm in the sewer, yep.
Yep. Well, the sewer fund, the sewer fund's going to lag. The water fund is now healthy with all the TR Horton and Stonehile permits because we had a bunch of them.
Well, I'd ask the same thing over in the water there, too. Because you've got a budget and you've got no actions on the revenue.
I think that's on the sales.
Yeah, I talked about the revenue side of impact fees.
So typically, one, majority of the construction happens during the summer, and that's when you see R and B.
How big months are?
Big months are typically July or September.
So you're expecting a hundred percent to be taken off?
If not, then the goal, you know, always the goal is to receive those revenues. If you don't, then you feather back on spending your money.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking. Because you're putting this number and you're spitting out things at the bottom. And I'm like, but I don't see them occurring yet.
Right. And the reason the sewer fund is lagging behind on the impact fees is Horton paying a pro-rata because Stonehile built a lift station that pumps over towards the park. And so in lieu, you either, they either pay their pro-rata charge, which is due at the time and they get final inspection, so that the service was provided for them. Or you collect impact fees if it's been feathered out over multiple projects. So they came in and gave a lump sum check of seventy-six thousand and change. And that, that went to that, so that kind of offset the sewer. So they're not going to have sewer pro-rata on those fifty-five lots in the last section of Horton because they paid, they paid a pro-rata charge.
Is that why you're also then behind on the revenue for sewer revenue? Because it's also behind?
Yes.
Okay, so you're still waiting for that to come in? Because sewer revenue is actually just a product of the water?
Yes, yes.
A percentage of that, so?
Right, they're all in it, right.
Okay, and then because of that, remind me and tell me, impact fees. We get our money because of the usage of the system?
Our timing of the system.
Right. Do we actually have some sort of initial cost that we incur, that we ask for impact fees? Is there truly something that we do?
Yes.
To get them connected? So the impact fees themselves have a price to compare to the cost?
Yes.
What costs us to do it?
Well, the, the impact fees are, we did the impact fee study about three, four years ago and created a capital improvement program, which included the sixteen-inch water line around County Line Road.
But the basis is based on cost?
Right.
Okay, that's where I think I mostly was going, is that the fee is based on the cost of what we have to do to set it up.
Right. So, yeah, and impact fees are for, impact fees are for new development, so, or?
It's for new.
For new.
Yeah, no, I got that.
It's the charge, it's basically the charge to tie onto the system and start using this?
But we actually have a cost that we have to put out there to get new up and going?
Yes.
That's all I want. Go ahead with the fancy.
No, 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 I just wanted?
Fancy magic up there.
I want, I want, yeah. It's an engineer's best friend, a spreadsheet, so. So the one point three two is our net revenue needed in sales. Go ahead, get the next couple. And right now, if you look at the bottom of your page, we've got nineteen hundred and twenty-three ESUs, which are equivalent service units. If you go to the very bottom of this page down here, you'll see in, whatever color that is, the number of meters, the three-quarter inch meters? Is it green?
Yes.
I'm colorblind, so I got to head and go with.
Green.
Okay, green, that, we've got fourteen hundred and sixty-five three-quarter inch meters in the system currently. We've got twenty-eight one-inch meters. We've got seven inch and a half meters, thirty-six two-inch meters, one three-inch meter, couple four-inch meters. And equivalencies are calculated based on flow capacity. So if you, if you go over to the red column, I'm thinking that's red. You'll see a one inch is two and a half times the flow of a three-quarter inch meter. That's the, you know, we can get about twenty to twenty-five gallons out of a three-quarter. We can get about fifty to sixty gallons out of a one-inch meter per minute. So that's how that equivalency is calculated. And then the last column is the, what we call the ESU, the equivalent service unit. So there's a one-to-one correspondence on the three-quarters. And each of those is multiplied by that factor to give us that ninety. And we add that up. So in the system, we're going to base, the base rate is going to be based against nineteen hundred and twenty-three ESUs in the system going forward. Now we've got to project the water sales for the year. How much water are we going to sell for the year? We're trending right now to about a hundred and twenty-five million gallons for the total year currently, based on what we've got coming up. We did about a hundred and twenty million last year. And obviously with new development, about ten thousand gallons a month times each unit that we're having. And we've got, we've got about an extra, well, we've got an extra two hundred ESUs right now. So that's how we kind of forecast this to be relatively conservative. I mean, we should get, we get a hundred and twenty-five, we should be getting about fifteen to twenty million gallons of additional sales just from new people. But we cut it back at a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty million, just to be safe. So we want to be conservative in the budget. We don't want to overestimate our revenue and get in that trap where we're trying to catch up at the end of the year.
You know, and if we're conservative, then you're completely different.
Well, and when we pull out the model itself, I can show you what that does to your rate. And it, you know, it all depends on how much risk the council wants to take in, you know, water rates to do that. Go ahead, next one, please. So a hundred and forty million gallons at your, at your new current base rate, which is what is proposed is three thirty, brings you that four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in what you're going to sell. If you sell a hundred and forty million gallons of water at the lowest tier rate. Now, you will sell some at the higher tier rates, but that's, again, that's the risk. That's, that's the component of the one point three two that we've got to get to. So, for the next. So we've got to make up that difference in that eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is basically what we're going to call the base rate that gets divided. Go ahead, that's good. Gets divided among the nineteen hundred and twenty-three units. And that gives you that number up there, thirty-seven point twenty is your base rate. So when we set the base rate for the water service to have a three-quarter inch meter, you're going to be charged thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents a month, regardless of if you use any water or not. You have an account? That's, that's how the base rate is set. And that's where, that's the dynamics in this sheet about how it's, how it's all set up. Okay? That'll get you that eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand that you see in total minimum charges. And that gets us to the one point three two eight, or one point three two oh total revenue that we need to cover the rate side of our expenses. I'm blocking you through the spreadsheet. We'll pull the spreadsheet up. We'll pull the spreadsheet up, so I just want you to see.
The four sixty-two is what?
Four sixty-two is the hundred and forty million gallons times your lowest tiered rate. Which is, we're proposing it at three dollars and thirty cents per thousand gallons.
Three thirty, oh, okay, it's proposed rate.
Yeah, the proposed low.
Yields thirty-seven twenty a month? Okay, I got it, yeah, okay. Total charge of the water, one point two.
So, and that gives you that total revenues from sales. So now that matches that. And that's all contained with a couple variables. Those two blue boxes right there are really the two variables that we have in setting up this rate. And we can go through any of that. That leads us to the third page of the, you know, the same, the same thing happens in sewer. We just kind of bypass that, you know, the same calculations and the same, you see the same ESUs, you see the same base cost, or, you know, it's all calculated that way. On the sewer expenditure spreadsheet, that takes you to this, what we call the rate table. Again, these, if this thing works, and it's been working for five years now, so. The thirty-seven twenty on the water, the thirty-two eighty-nine is the base rate on the sewer, calculated on those individual sheets. And then here's your three thirty, lowest tier rate for water sales. So those two numbers and that number matches, then they're all interconnected on.
So am I basically seeing you're going to go down a little on your water rate? But you're going to go up a little bit on your sewer?
Right. And that's because the build, the building, the three hundred and thirty-five thousand of the buildings in the sewer fund.
So make another plug for you guys to come up with some sort of a lead explaining to everybody about all the great things you do.
We're looking at a fifteen-year note on the building as well. I'm trying to figure out three thirty-five.
I just think to you more about what you're doing.
So when you're factoring both water and sewer, it's essentially two dollars and seventy-six increase on the base rate?
Yes, sir. So if you go down the first column, the green, the percentage increase is four percent. The dollar increase is two seventy-six per month. At five thousand is three seventy-six per month. At ten thousand, six oh six per month increase. And the majority of consumers that we have inside the city residents are at the ten thousand gallon.
Or less, yeah.
Or less. Probably has your average over thirty days, what it costs you per day. Once you come on down the column, you see the depreciation line, the ninety-four five hundred is where we work towards bringing up the net position, to where we are working towards that three to six months of fund balance. If we stay on the current trend, it looks like we'll achieve that in the next three to five years. Then when you get down to the impact fees, we're anticipating a hundred and twenty lots on water and a hundred on sewer. And then?
How does palladium factor into that?
So palladium, they paid, when they, they're already in the current budget, so. Okay. So what we're anticipating as far as these hundred and twenty lots, the P and Z meeting that happened last week with Home, what's it, History Maker Homes?
History Maker.
That came in, wanted a purchase that have a rest of Greenwood under contract, annexation hearings that y'all already, already taken, been organized in place. PD and the annexation are coming to y'all Tuesday. The agenda will go out and pack up, go out tomorrow. You have the recommendation, feedback. So P and Z voted it down because there were, because all the lots were six thousand square foot lots. The goal in meeting with the developer and the broker was to eliminate, it's an older PD that has one acre ranches, which is what's being annexed in, that was out in the county. And that's the smallest lot that you can have out in the county, so we'll bring what, sixteen acres in. It's also eliminating in an old, old PD, multifamily, an apartment complex, that was going to be straight multifamily that is not beneficial to the city currently, nor is it beneficial to the school district from a service standpoint, whether it's the school district servicing transitional families or the fire and police typically have a higher call volume at our apartment complexes in the city. So it's eliminating the multifamily that we don't have enough primary jobs for to sustain, as well as two-family around it and turning them all into single-family dwellings. So we had a meeting this morning to try and keep it on track. Because it is coming to council with a negative, or not a negative, but it was voted down by P and Z. So what was, what was the crux of the issue? So Bob Enders that lives in Greenwood had, didn't attend P and Z. The three members that did attend P and Z took his concerns into consideration. One was the comparable value, which was worked out with the broker because the homes that are going to be coming in and the lot sizes were not going to be necessarily comparable to what he has. So if he chose to sell his house, it wouldn't be a negative comp for any of those homes that it sold unless the square footage of the home was similar and the lot they could get around the lot value. What was, what they did point out that was going to be a negative is if the multi-family and the two-family were allowed to come in, that had the potential to negatively affect his value on his property. So what they worked out and what the History Maker did to try and make it to where they will come, the two members of P and Z will come to council on Tuesday, and hopefully the super community schools will be here, too, is to talk about, they worked on a transition. So they worked on the lots that adjoining, that are adjoining to the existing Greenwood lots for those to be seventy-two hundred minimum. And then to transition into the six thousand as you get down towards the duplexes and as you get further out towards Sanford.
So what's the reason that they can't meet our current requirement?
They just want to build, they want to build a larger home on the lots. They're trying to find that value. So the person that owns?
Well, we know they're about making money, but?
Well, but the person that, what it comes down to, the person that's selling the multifamily and the two-family, the value that they believe that they have, because multifamily is a very difficult zoning to achieve within a municipality, that he wants top dollar for it. So for them to buy that and then try and build single-family homes instead of this multifamily apartment units, it's not as profitable. So in trying to achieve the goals of the city and the school district, they want to do that and still find their value. So they're trying to build a little bit smaller lots and to have a little bit smaller setbacks, have larger homes with higher values that benefit the school district and the city. So they're trying, they're trying to meet all the goals and still do a product here and there.
But I mean, I mean, that's not why I doubt the fact that it is. This is about money. They wanna make money. I still gotta come back and go, okay, but we originally said these were our requirements for building sites. So, what's in it for us, other than telling me, well, we could have these other things, why would we want to do it? Will we learn that truth, do you know?
To eliminate, to eliminate an older PD that's not beneficial to the city.
So, the plus for us is to get rid of the old PD.
So, if you go down to Sanford, does it go by, does it go down by the other sites?
I think it's west of the existing Greenwood, right?
Yes.
So, west of there, but east of Sanford?
What is the senior living?
Palladium.
Palladium.
It's north of Palladium.
This is north of Palladium. Does it connect to the property of Palladium?
It will, it will have Greenwood Drive will be built to handle the, once, once that starts to develop, as well as the elementary school, and then there are another 110 lots anticipated south of the new elementary, then Greenwood...
South of the new elementary?
Right next to North Park. So, what you end up having is Greenwood Drive relieve the traffic off of 5. Lancing gain is expected to be, anticipated to be a four-length divided road, and that's to get people from 5 over to, over to 75, and to eliminate congestion on 5 as we continue to move northward. And so, Greenwood will need to be built. It's, it has the ability to be beneficial.
So, will this property be right at the next, the property that is owned?
Those homes will back, those homes will back up to the back end of Palladium.
Now, are we talking about the homes, or the multi, the apartments, or part of the...
It's supposed to be all the, one-four family. They're all single-family. They're all single.
Everything's gonna, and the lines to the...
If you're part of the PD, if you don't, then it will be two-family and another apartment complex that won't be senior living, it will be regular multifamily, if you leave the old PD in place.
But, we want it to be all single, we're talking about, we want all single-family.
That would be ideal, because...
But, that's not what's coming to us, do you know what I mean?
Yes, yes. The one that's changed, it's there.
The current PD has the multifamily.
And the, and the...
And that's what they're trying to...
And that, that is built into this?
Well, part of it, because you don't wanna anticipate every bit of...
And I got that part, but you made a comment that Palladium was already in the budget, and Palladium's not doing anything right now as far as impacting 2017.
Right. Well, they're not, they're not buying, well, they are buying a little bit of water.
Okay, but, but what you estimated for last year is not gonna probably occur in 2017, so my concern then is that, that you put their usage supposedly in there, but we might be beyond what you projected, because if we're coming up on, we're at about what we should be in water sales, and that's without Palladium.
Right.
So, if you're doing 2018, and you think you've already included Palladium, and it's not happening...
Well, there are water...
Are you gonna be under for 2018?
Water usage from Palladium will start now, because all the meters will set this week.
Right. So, the base rate will be charged, not the consumption, but the base rate, because they actually have the meters installed in place.
So, then, what you would predict on the water sales actually, because we're about at target right now, we should actually come out better on the water sales, which will then finally pick up Palladium.
I have a question about that. So, my initial question is in regards to the impact fees. Is that what we were talking about, the impact fees, or is that the water usage as well?
Well, I mean, we just, we just transitioned between the two, so.
Yeah, I was talking consumption.
Okay. Well, and just, okay, just so you know, Palladium will have 132 units total, and...
It could be a lot longer.
That's not, in 140 million, it's very little. It really...
There aren't gonna be watered lawns or anything.
Well, yeah, right, that's, well, they will have irrigation, however the building's larger, the building itself, but it's gonna be a low-use system, and you have the ability to only have one, these aren't families, so you either have one senior or two seniors in each unit, which hopefully they'll be shopping and eating out, and will be...
And they don't use as much water.
They will use as much water.
It's silly that you call that...
They all have to run the water.
So, we wanna have, that's why we, that's why we put the majority of the rate in the base rate, is because we wanna have a certain guarantee of monies every year to be able to continue to operate.
Okay. I was just concerned that you said it was in there and nothing was happening, when you did not, you were gonna get hit that next year.
132 units averaging, and senior housing, so it would average one and a half people per unit, times 100 gallons per day, equals 7 million gallons for the whole year, for the whole unit, so.
And then, that just blew a breeze right over my head.
Seven million gallons.
Instead of calling it 132 families, we might call it, let's say, 50.
Yeah, but it's, it's...
Forty. Forty is still a lot.
But, senior, they don't use as much.
No, I know. They're, they're water use.
Right.
And it doesn't even matter, as long as you say, yes, you know it's in the budget and it hasn't happened, you pick it up later, and we won't be under for 2018.
The reason of, what jumped to 140 million is, we got the new Stone Hollow homes, we've got the new Porton homes that will be online, Palladium was in the calculation, but Palladium, for the year, out of that 140 million, jumped to 140 million is only seven. So, that, you know, they're a very minor, although they're, you know, it's a nice development, they're really a minor player in the increase.
And we don't know what's the new plan for the usage either.
Yes, yeah.
And does, I mean, for a house's water usage, is watering a lawn like a big deal?
Yep.
It's that big?
Yep. It's over 50, it's usually over 50%.
Shouldn't we not start considering things about putting in a bathroom, landscaping, and water?
That's what, that's what this, yeah. That's what this tiered rate is meant, when it was implemented five years ago in all the other cities. It was a conservation measure required by North Texas and City of Dallas and all the major water providers, GTA. Well, GTA is a customer of North Texas, so they had to do it. So, to induce conservation, they want you to go to a tiered rate, so that if you do use your sprinkler two or three or four times a week, you end up up here where now you're paying $4.44 per thousand gallons instead of 3.30, and that's...
But, you said the norm is at 10,000.
The norm for Van Alstine is eight to 10,000, so most people are paying about 3,000.
I guess I'm thinking, though, that you're only having 10,000 increments. I'm thinking it should be, you jump up a bunch once you get to 15,000 then. I mean, if you really wanna induce people, and you're telling me 50% of their usage is landscaping, I'm like, you should take a pretty awful hit.
Yeah.
And once you get to 15,000, yours is 20,000. I mean, honestly, 50% of your usage is watering lawns, that's pretty bad.
Yep. Well, and you can see, if you use 5,000, your total bill will be 103, but if you jump to 20,000, you're paying 220.
I know, but I still think, and we're not here necessarily to change those tiers, but I think, I would see a lot more encouragement if it got pretty ugly at 15,000 instead of 20,000.
Well, and that was done, that was done initially, and we had a drastic, we were up to nine or something like that, and Robert, well, that's when we had the rollback on the water rates. That, that year that that came up, we ended up having to give rebates on the water rates.
I don't think it was because of the tier.
Well, well, it wasn't, but, but the tier, but it, but it created, you know, people saw a $617 water bill as a prospect, and, you know, that, that got everybody up in arms, and we spent several months getting that taken care of.
I think it was change on the whole, but there's a lot of that, but...
But, yeah.
It might be worth reviewing again at some point.
Okay, well, when we open up the spreadsheet, we can show you what...
I mean, we know that in the nearer future, water is becoming an extremely costly resource.
So, the thing that we're trying to balance is, we're paying that take, we're paying water, you see, you know, for...
It's over 6.
Yeah, so, 10 years, 10, 11 years. We want people to consume up to that take and pay rate, because we don't wanna continue to pay for something that we're heading, even though, you know, response is that you don't need water. Well, I'm not trying to be funny, I mean, it is what it is.
It's true.
So, the main thing is, we wanna be able to pay for something, we wanna be able to consume something we've been using.
Right.
We're also trying to entice manufacturing industry to come here that actually do use a lot of water, and so, if that's the case, we do wanna have more attractive rates. Our highest, our largest industry currently that uses the most water is the school district. So, if you go in and you start really hitting on the school district very hard, then you're gonna create an adverse relationship with the school district. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to talk to you about pitfalls. So, the two major pitfalls are recruitment of manufacturing that utilizes utility, and the school district.
Yeah, and I, and I understand them. I guess the pinpoint is the residential landscape watering is the problem. How do you pinpoint that? You know, because that's what we wanna discourage, not the other people that are bringing in money. We're talking about the people that are wasting it.
Well, right. But you...
And I don't know, I don't know that there's an answer, but...
Well, there, you actually, you've passed your conservation ordinance, so right now you're supposed to be watering twice a week, outdoor watering, and if somebody's caught water, and depending, if you're...
Caught.
Tuesday night.
Cove, cove block.
They actually, we have to get...
They're trying to creep and go out and address it.
Yeah, they, the police can go up and issue a warning, and if they continue to do it, they can issue...
So, that's our encouragement right now, is violations.
Plus, all the new houses are coming in with drip systems and service.
Are they?
Yes.
Oh.
So, the developers are actually conservation-minded too.
Okay.
So, we're not seeing the high cost in, I mean, water usage there in the older sexes that we're seeing.
That we're the ones that are 50%.
Okay. Any other questions on how, I mean, these are just screenshots, and we can get into the, Brad, you had a question about the impact fees, so.
No, that was my initial question about Palladium and their relationship to impact.
Okay. And Frank kind of addressed it, but the 120 is on the water side, and the 100 is on the sewer side, that's because of that D.R. Horton program, we just kinda took the remaining 20 lots out, not, we, if they pull all those permits before the end of the year, it'll be 120 and 120 if we pull out any permits. But, again, it's a conservative way to forecast revenue without getting out over our tips on the skis, and trying, trying to keep, trying to keep it manageable.
So, we can move to the modified spreadsheet to be able to look at, how does it affect the rate? But, with what I've, what I've told you, with Greenwood and its ability to have anywhere from 218 to 200 lots, if it's approved by council, the 110 lots that are anticipated to come in under the elementary, the new elementary, as well as, Stone Hollow has a whole second phase behind the old elementary of another 60 lots?
Forty's it.
Forty, okay. So, you have the numbers there, we just don't wanna count on all of that in 17, 18, because, again, like Suzanne's been saying, what if we don't hit it?
I think as far as, when we're looking at these percentage increases, you know, we've historically have been pretty competitive with other CGMA water users, but we have a lot of folks that move in from other parts of the metro place that can get a bit of sticker shock whenever they get their first water bill.
Yes, sir.
So, if you go... I, I don't think we should increase anything beyond that.
Before. Okay, but if, okay, so, you brought up a good point. If you go to the next sheet, which is the rate comparison sheet, you've got, in the left-hand column, you've got the 2018 proposed Van Alstine rate, you've got our 27.00 rate, which you can see both of them on the previous sheet. Well, we've got, these are current rates for 2017, for, we don't have what's being anticipated, what they're proposing to their councils, but you've got Anna's current rate, Melissa's current rate, Tom Bean, Howe, Gunner, Salina, Allen, and South Grayson Water System. You can, it gives you their rates, it gives you their meter rates, their typical bill, the sewer rates, the sewer meter rates and the typical bill, but where you really need to place the emphasis is down in the total bill, down in the bottom column, because that's where the rubber hits the road as far as what are their, what are their consumers paying versus ours. And so, if you look at that, we've been competitive the last four years, we've been competitive, we've been underneath in most columns of Anna, Melissa, and Howe, which are the other CGMA member cities. Well, Anna has just started to achieve that, they've got three times our population, they're starting to achieve the ability to flatten out their rates. So, they're not wanting, you know, we're not gonna be underneath Anna with this new proposed rate. We are still underneath Melissa, which is twice our size, and Howe, of course, is just still having all kinds of pains. Gunner hasn't improved their system for development or any type of growth, so you've got...
They're kinda like where we worked 40 years ago, basically.
But, now, Gunner has got the water and sewer in the same thing.
That's right. So, you have, so there's a little less sophisticated breakout, and so, what you end up having is, you have cities, you have some apples and oranges here, but the main thing is to give you a good comparison of where we are, and compare my cities around us, and then Allen's thrown in there, just trying to figure out what's one of the bigger cities in South Michigan.
So, remind me again, because, I mean, the water, the water rate part is fine, it's the water rate that makes it brutal, so it is. Remind me again, where, where is that on the magic population sheet?
And you know, when we're comparing all of these towns, like Anna, Anna's more, Anna's at least three times larger than we are, and Melissa is at least twice as large, and Salina and Allen also are bigger. So, when you really get, and I don't really know about that, but what we've done here is the water and sewer in the same thing. So, even though you're saying like, there you've got this little bitty town next to Dallas or something, so you're comparing things that are not size-wise, I don't really see that the proposed, or 218, is too out of line, but like Suzanne, our meter rates are like far, well, I don't know about them, but they are way up...
Well, so, it goes back to part of the conversation where we talk about guaranteeing enough money to operate.
Well, where, where the rate comes from?
Okay, okay. I'll take you back to that.
I mean, when we go from, they've got 81, 78 there, so 493, 40.
Well, okay. Also, also, if you take a look down at the bottom, go, go to the average 10,000 gallons, and go to that line, see where Van Alstine falls versus...
I know, but you didn't point me there, so obviously, if I'm gonna open this up and look at this, I'm gonna be like, not finding that number that you want me to find, so I want you to roadmap me a lot better than what we're doing right now.
Okay. The, okay, remember...
Because I bought your magic number until I got to the water meter rate.
Okay, that's fine. The three point, 1.320 is what we need to make in over sales.
I got that.
We're estimating 140 million gallons times the base rate of 3.30, which is at 5,000.
That's the water.
That's what we, that's what we're gonna make in sales.
Yeah.
That's the usage. So, now, the rest of that, that 858 is what we need to make up as the base rate. That's where, that's where the base rate comes from, and that's divided by the night, the total number of service units.
So, that's actually, that's our water...
Right. Yeah, that, that, that's the difference we gotta make, because we can only sell about $500,000 or $462,000 in projected water sales.
There's gotta be some way to explain this a lot to other people about making up their rates. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do with it, the point is, and I understand why we look for it too, because we're not at the point, the breaking point of having those populations bring the rate down, but there's gotta be something that says, no reason, you know, water rates come from the sale of the water you use, but water meter rates come from the support and the maintenance and the infrastructure. That we have to capture because we don't make enough in water sales. That, I got, and I, I wouldn't see any of this when you sent me it in the bill, and I would go, oh... rates come from the support and the maintenance and the infrastructure. That we have to capture because we don't make enough in water sales. That, I thought, and I, I wouldn't see any of this when you sent me it in the bill, and I would go, oh crap, why are we costing so much in the water meter? Because I thought what you did here, I didn't understand enough about my bill.
The media was like, sewer meter rate, now the water.
Well, I never liked the sewer calculation. I guess, I was going to ask the question, when Gunner puts them together, I'm like, why don't we put it together?
Okay. If you, if you want to do that, take the total volume out of, you don't care how much water you sell, that number is that number right there. So you can do a base rate of fifty.
Fifty-six dollars.
Fifty, yeah, everybody just gets a bill every month of fifty-six dollars, and ESU with fifty-six dollars, that, that is the.
That's everybody.
And, and then, then the city's on the hook if you don't, you know, yeah, everybody buys, and that, that should be.
Oh, but that doesn't get it with your tiered people using more water and stuff.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, so.
Apartment rates, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is this?
I know. And I like, I think there just needs to be the simple explanation of the difference between the water usage, usually water rate.
And the base rate.
And that's what the city can sell.
Yeah.
Versus the base rate, which is, we have to pay for all that infrastructure that gives you that water and you're using. And then I'm like, oh, and that makes sense because we're not big enough yet to.
You're right. My, my business partner, the Johnson, Vanessa Johnson, was the director of Dallas Water and Utilities for twenty-six years. And he proposed the first, probably was not there, but he proposed the first water rate, not kidding, he proposed the first water rate in Dallas in, from since nineteen. And he wanted to raise it three cents, and it was already, I mean, I forget how low it was, it was ridiculous, but he proposed a three cent water rate change, because Dallas is so expansive and growth, they've got all the feet and all the shoulders to lift the utility up, you know? Once, once we get to that break-even point, it looks like Anna's getting close, because, you know, they, they can start lowering their base rate. Once you start seeing that, that's when you know you've got enough legs, you know, shoulders holding up the front.
But I think there's points to explain that, but.
Yeah.
Well, Joe Close would understand and explain that to him, because I do know we're small. I, I got some of the basics of understanding that, you know, we all have to foot, you know, having a, a system replaced, but I didn't understand it until, I mean, you saw the light went off. Oh, I got it now. That then, I can sit and understand these comparisons a lot better. And then, I'm not sure how you're getting down to the, your point of the ten thousand gallons that Van Austin water has.
Well, the average.
Tell me why I wanted to get down to that number.
The, the average bill, the average usage for Van Austin is ten thousand gallons per household. So the average, so the average billing for Van Austin next year, that ten thousand gallons will be a hundred and forty dollars and ninety-nine cents. This year it's one thirty-five, ninety-five. When you, Anna will be, Anna at her current rate, and they're, they're subject to going up on their bills, or, you know, they could go up and go down, we don't know, we won't know until they're above the budget as well, but their current rate is one thirty-seven. So we're just competitive, we're still competitive with that, we're cheaper than Melissa, is that Tom Bean, smaller.
Not a lot.
And Gunner, yeah, so, I mean, Tom Bean and Howe, so we're cheaper than Howe, we're cheaper than basically everybody in the, on the average bill. That's, that's how I got you to ten thousand, that's why I was taking it ten thousand.
Okay, and I think that's important to call out, because then I could go, okay, a typical Van Austin night, you know, is a ten thousand gallons, then I can compare across and go, oh, okay.
We just, yeah, we wanted to show you what the low usage and the, and the higher usage bills are in comparison. If we could do an average billing.
I'm not even sure why we could go on that. Let me just get these numbers.
They're going to play later, though. Well, the main thing is to give you a good snapshot, because, you know.
Yeah, but it throws it out there, and everybody's like, well, they don't have to pay that at all on us. They're thirty-six bucks, and we know that it's just, it's such an outlier.
Yeah, but if they don't put it out there, then we've got every town that's next, and then we eliminate one, and then you say, oh, what about?
Well, yeah.
It's where, it's.
You got them all, but not that. But see, we connect with each one of those, Howe, Tom Bean, Anna, and Gunner. Well, it's the nearest town in that group.
Yeah, I see.
So it's going north, south, and then it goes to the next town.
I think apples to apples, too, because fellow CGMA members is the best point.
Yeah. We have a similar debt, of the same.
Yeah.
When you're looking, their sewer, their sewer plant is just a bomb. That's what it is.
Yeah, they got a leaky system, and there's no operation cost.
Could you put on the top, the population?
Say again?
Could you put the population?
The population.
Because you know what, maybe a lot of people don't even know the size anymore of Anna and Melissa. I know they got bigger, but I honestly never.
I would really like to know the size of Gunner.
Yeah.
What is the size of Gunner?
I think it's a thousand.
It's not even.
They, I think they have a problem in that.
Thousand four hundred.
Their group is outside the city limits.
About thirty-two thousand.
Right. And they have a, if you'll go there, you'll find there is that country left.
It's because it's the ISD that's the, the cities like that, yeah.
Again, this, this is another thing we do for this session. In December, November, December, we'll update and get the current, the twenty-eighteens, so, and then we'll have those, you'll see those numbers next year versus the twenty-nineteen rate, so that just, that, that's just kind of a.
Yeah, I really think that is the problem.
Well, they're going to have the tollway pretty close to them, so.
Yeah, and I think that's going to make all the difference.
Yeah, it would.
And I think, I think eventually they will.
Watch, watch, watch there, we do a lot of things.
I got to ask you some line on it still.
Okay.
Miscellaneous revenue on water was huge. What was that?
Uh, most of it's, uh, is it twenty thousand?
It's seventy-three thousand dollars of the budget.
Life fee?
It's got to be something huge that sticks out.
Okay. I'll get you that.
For sure. Because I think you used.
Oh, yeah, that's.
When you did your budget.
Okay.
Did you start at that number?
So with the take, with the take, that's, that's a good one. With the take-or-pay money that we pay in every year that we haven't been using, Anna and Melissa have been using our water and then reimbursing us for it on a percentage.
So this is that.
So this is Anna and Melissa.
This is their buy.
This is them buying our water and then paying us back.
I thought you said a year that way.
Do we just take the net piece?
No, we're trying to.
I can't read this.
It's getting, it's going to, it's going to, well, we used a little bit of water this year, so there'll be a lot less.
You stuck with budget for next year, twenty?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll have some, yeah, we'll have some, but we used a little, we used it for April and May, we used water out of CGMA, so our, the difference between getting all of it and part of it, but the rates went up, Suzanne, so, what, the rate went up, we'll cover what we used.
Okay.
So that's why I'd state that we, to approximate, we just kept it the same.
I remember that last year when we went through this process, that number was substantially smaller for the prior year, and we ended up capturing substantially more. Was that up to that twenty?
It's because, well, there's, well, one reason was Anna didn't, I don't believe Anna used all of theirs. Let's go back to.
Yeah, they started taking.
Yeah, they did.
They did?
They did not.
No.
They didn't, and then Melissa bought Anna's water, and so we only got, we only got a percentage of what Melissa bought from Anna and us and Howe and everything, so now that Anna, Anna and Howe, higher than Anna and Howe, Anna and Melissa have both been taking, then that number was considerably larger. But, but we don't get any estimates from GTUA, CGMA.
It just happens.
Or anybody.
So you're not counting on that to happen?
It's the, it's the end tally, and then it's like, okay, where did that more go? And then they check the meters at Anna and, and Melissa that are coming out of wine, and then they do the, do the share of what you're going to owe to the cities.
But year, fiscal year nineteen, that'll be zero. Because, because we are going to start taking CGMA to the take-or-pay number, so we, our goal is to be, we're allotted a hundred and sixty, no, it's fifty-nine million a year out of CGMA.
So we're taking that and we're supplementing the well, basically? Yeah, right. And that's another reason, going back and we want to diagnose those wells versus just trying to fix them and not knowing what the underlying cause is, is because we actually have an opportunity now since we're taking water out of wine.
You did to those wells, but you did to us, they've got to be upset.
Also, I mean, the water, we're planning for the water taste to, we, well, six, we're going to eventually put it where it's blending the water before it goes into the system.
So we're going to give it half well, half CGMA water.
That's all we're doing when it tasted bad.
Well, no, you were getting.
We did it direct.
It was, it was blended in the pipes.
It was blended in the pipe, yeah, you were getting that blend in the pipes. We, we want to do that in the tanks so we can treat it before it gets out and then.
I could taste what's written in. Can I?
I'm sorry.
Again? You can take your turn.
Oh, thank you. I noticed on wastewater, the interest, interest expense was the same, but not on the water, and it's up. Why is the interest expense up? It's a number sixty-seven ninety on page four. Why is it up?
It's on our debt payments.
The interest has, the interest rate has gone up, or?
Mount, because we're, we're paying on pipe bursting, Texas Water Development Board, the, the pipe bursting, the clean water, the drinking water, and then also the older CGMA loans and debt.
But it's planned to suck down fifty years is?
So it's the interest expense off all of our loans?
Well, I mean, that's what it was before, this is the two-eighty-five that jumped up to the three-forty-five.
Oh, yeah, that's big.
Which is completed.
And I wanted to know what made that jump that much larger.
Okay, I can go back to, I can go back to the quotes and find the breakout of.
It's like sixty, sixty thousand more a year.
Okay.
So I, I was just curious as to why, as we had.
Okay. I guess like if we took money, additional debt, it's made for that interest. I'll, I'll have to go back to the investment.
This would get that.
I'll write next. Connection and reconnection fees.
Now, I thought, did we redo all those bonds that, I thought we had one that was still going on for some little thing.
Well, now there was a bond.
I'll look at that.
There was a bond listed.
The payment's not the same number here.
The bond fees are the exact same, it's right under it. So, and the bond, but now the bond fee on the wastewater is up, uh, uh, from zero, so I, I don't know.
I'm actually going down on the loan to the principal.
Sure.
Okay, so, all right, so the question, you got on interest expense, the change. You want to see a, instead of seeing.
I want to know the interest expense, what we did to cost it to.
Sure. I'll take you back.
I, I just wanted to know what it was.
So I'm just trying to make sure where we are on questions. So we have that, you also want to see a, instead of seeing where the money's going to come from on the building and the expenditures, you want to see, you want to see a cost, project, you want to see a project sheet.
The project spend out between the capital and the opex.
On the, on the building, correct?
I'm making a list.
Well, honestly, I'd say all your projects, I would list capex, opex, because, I mean, the building was an obvious one to ask about.
True.
I don't know if the other ones had a related, I wouldn't think so.
No, the building had to be engineered with a sign, but.
Yeah, that's why we found that it's going to break, but I'm not saying, you know, mine, the only two things that I really want is to know about this interest expense.
Okay.
And then I'm holding a copy of the chart, because I'm really. Well, you can laugh all you want.
No, no.
But that is, that explains it to be better than anything else, and that's what I was going to ask, that it be done with every bit of the budget. Because to me, I can instantly look at that pie chart, and I know what's going on in that department.
Well, we want to show you the numbers to show you where those were.
Well, I, yes, I know, I want the others, but I, I would, I like to have it right here.
I'll get you a copy of that one, go to the water.
Water, electricity, we're underspend on that a decent amount.
That's because we lost wells.
Okay, so that is a one-time event, and that's why the FY eighteen's back up to the budget.
Do they get back up on? Of course, when we put these bare speeds on the, on the wells, they're going to reduce the startup amps, so.
I've got a pair of this speed on my compressor, right?
Yeah.
On my AC compressor.
Correct.
Yeah. So yes, I remember the explanation about them. And then you had something, okay, so that's why your expenses this year on that pump, wells and motors like jumped up four hundred percent was because of that breakage? Water line, you're way under on water lines then?
I had to, when the way went down, we had to cut back here, but.
We didn't anticipate the well going in.
Oh, so you tried to save on, okay, tried to save on that account to make up for the others.
Had to quit doing repair on water lines to pay for it.
The only repairs we made were emergencies.
Okay.
But the Dallas Street water line just went out, so, or that's, that's maintenance water lines.
Yeah.
That was just a cost saving measure. Okay, and postage, I assume you're just having to take the bills, the bills go out, that's why yours is. And then I wanted to ask about insurance proceeds too. You had a huge insurance.
They turned a well in on insurance and they paid, so.
So some of the loss got made up there, and then you paid up the rest in the price.
The only thing that I see that I would not have gone down on if you did, and that is animal control services. You went from the three to one, I just, you know.
Well, two thousand dollars.
Huh?
I mean, it, it might.
I, I know, but I think that we don't enforce that a lot, and we don't seem to have the ducks of animals that we used to, I bought, and now we've, we've had two cats come, and I hate to see the rate keep climbing.
Well, cats are the hardest thing in the world, I know.
I know, we, we're keeping them, so you don't have to worry about it.
A long history.
You can go down on your mount.
You did, you took care of it.
I took care, but only for two, two very small.
We really hit the old population the last two years. We, we were doing ten, fifteen dollars in a month the last couple of years, and now you don't see them unless somebody comes through and starts dumping them in, and that's usually what happens. But with.
A lot of people don't want us to pick them up because they don't want them to go to the pound. They want to keep them and post them to Facebook and try to find them.
Only being on the highway, that's a good dumping point.
And of course, we do have a fee, if they bring one in, just dump them, it's a ninety-dollar fee, but it costs me fifty dollars every time I pay one, plus the vampire and the vehicles.
That's why I'm wanting to go down on the mountain and spend, so I guess. Everybody's going to keep what's there, don't they?
Now, is that, is that, will you just take them up to the showroom?
That's all I do.
Okay, that's what I thought you did, it's just transporting them up there. Can I ask what a credit card discount is?
It's the fee that we are charged by the processor for, when we take credit cards in the office or over the phone, that's the fee they charge us.
But you should be picking it up in the top then, on revenue, because don't you charge to do that?
No.
You don't charge people for using credit cards?
We can.
I thought you were.
No, not in the office.
I'm using credit card.
The only time you're charged to pay with your card is if you pay through the online The only time you're charged to pay with your card is if you pay through the online portal, and it's that processor that charges you, it's not a fee that we receive at all.
So, it's the online one that has the charge, but otherwise, you let people come in?
Uh-huh, we're all in, it's free.
Until the credit card swiper breaks, and then it'll be all online.
We shouldn't be paying that. I don't think we should be paying credit card fees. Okay, I'll put it this way, I don't wanna pay my person, people use a credit card to pay with one of them.
I have a suggestion.
That's right, pay by cash, pay by chat.
We can, we currently use a card swiper, and I don't know if you've ever tried to call them over the phone, especially on the 15, our phone lines are backed up. We only have one phone, one card swiper, and those cost, I think, about $300. And we usually have to replace at least one a year, so we stopped with the two when we only have one. And our thought, what we'd like to do is, when that card swiper breaks, we do all online payments. That way, you will be charged a fee, it's just not money we see.
I thought most people did that anymore, they're like, listen, if you're gonna pay by credit card, you're gonna...
You're gonna pay the fee, yeah.
Because I don't know why we would pay for it.
We brought it up a couple of years ago, and it's left him.
Bring it up to Hannah. I'm all for it.
Well, I mean, honest to goodness, honest to goodness, once this one breaks, we're not intending to replace it.
So, what's your message to the government?
Well, good.
Because the encouragement isn't necessarily where people are using the online credit cards for, they're doing their bank draft, they're setting up their payment through their bank. So, they're willing to receive the payments.
I really would like to ask us, why in the world we can't set up an electronic payment? Because that gets us our pay a lot quicker. If we could do it and then not charge for them, but I don't know what's involved. I mean, if I can swipe it through people's squares, how come we can't take online payments? Or autographs? Well, no, you take autographs, if I do it through the bank, you don't have an online...
Are we contracted with the bank, and we just, we'll turn the money right to a certain credit check?
But, that's only if you use Texas.
Maybe after the machine breaks next year, we can consider...
Yeah, please do come forward with something on that, because it seems very old fashioned, and I definitely don't think we should be paying people fees.
One of the things that is incorporated in the budget in the contract services is starting with e-bill and e-pay, where you can get the bill, I think it's kinda like what you're talking about, get the bill emailed to you, so you don't have to call it, you don't have to receive it.
You are the only bill I have that I have to write a check every month, it's a million.
See, I write it every bill I get.
Yeah.
It's been drawn out of time for seven years in town, a lot of them, Suzanne.
I pay it.
They've been drawing out of my account for seven years, but that is, that is an option. I never agree with you.
Bank draft.
No, but you have to set it up with the bank. I don't like to set this up.
We need a bank draft, where you can come, give us a voided...
Give my information?
And then you'll get a bill that says draft is open.
Problem is, is that, you know, then we run the risk of, I don't know, I don't like giving my information to you, because then you're responsible for my information. I don't think you wanna be in the business of mine.
I think we may as well.
Okay.
But, come forward with things, I think you...
So, ultimately, besides these four things to follow up on, what we're working towards is the approval of the rate to be able to go ahead and publish the intent to change rates in the bills. So, what are the suggestions from council, what would y'all like to see? Is there any way that we could show...
Oh, we have something in the talk that...
Yeah, I have, this is actually the spreadsheet that answers Suzanne's question about, if you, to lower your base rate, Jennifer can put in 150 million, instead of 140 million? It's kinda... Base rate goes down 35, yeah, 2, less than 2.5, so, and that's 10 million gallons go down instead of go down just a little bit, and see what that's, yeah, that changed from 420, I think, to 495, or 462 to 495, so, extra 10 million, yeah, that's right, $33,000. So, you'd have to forecast a significant upgrade, enough amount of water that you'd have to do to affect that base rate.
I'm perfectly fine with your numbers, I think we need, I think we need something that explains how you come about the things, and put it in simple terms, and do a nice, pretty graphic, you know? Here's, here's, here's water meter rate, here's water flow, this one, once again, equals how much we can sell, this is all the infrastructure. It is what it is, I mean, I, I think people don't appreciate, it is what it is.
Okay, we can, I mean, yeah, we can work on it, put together a message.
I wonder if also throwing in that, like, it may be a, it would be a, maybe just for us to just put our fellow CGMA members' creations in there?
Okay.
Just so they can pass it around.
Yeah, I think this is still, this should still, I think that's still, but I think you should understand what you're paying for, and I don't think people understand in the slightest what they're paying for.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we know there's something out there that does all the stuff, but then I always hear that, you know, we have challenges with things, so...
We've got pictures, if you wanna see, we brought pictures too, if you wanna see what Steve's challenging.
No, 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 I don't wanna see that. But, I think a nice, simple graphic that explains what we're paying for, and the difference between water sales and water meter rate, and then it's infrastructure, and it's water flow.
I think that because of human nature, most, if you sit down, something that is just really there, they don't, the average person doesn't sit down and read it word for word. And I think she's right in that knowing engineers, since we have one in our family too, and this is no offense, but some engineers think differently than the average person. I have learned, I know ours does, he does, I know. But, and I think it's very important that it's just very simple, not a big complicated thing. I like your charts, I understand your charts, and I really like the pie, but I do think that you can be too wordy.
I go with pictures.
I think wordy loses people, so, do you, do you not think?
Oh, yeah, I don't know if, I'll pull the post, just collect additional information through the website, maybe you have some more stuff on there. I've got more questions.
I think that would be very helpful, because I think there are people who will do that, and I think it'd be great, put that on there, and tell them how, where to go.
A simple graphic that explains the make-up, put this, and then if they wanna get into Lynn's beautiful calculations...
We can put it on the website.
Absolutely.
And I like your things, Lynn, I don't mean to be insulting.
No, you're not insulting, I mean, I just...
I knew you wanted us to get into the magical spreadsheet, I was like...
No, no, yeah, well, I...
I got it.
But, I really like this sort of thing, because it's just very simple and very plain, and I think everybody understands it.
Okay, so this is true.
I would suggest you put the pie in.
Yeah, but you could do pie too, I'm saying.
Well, and that's what I was trying to get her to do, but her computer's acting up, but on that 70, on that 78% of sales, if we broke that into sales and interest...
Don't call it sales, I don't know what the heck is sales.
What would you break it into?
Break it into, what, the 140 million, the $462,000 that we do that, and the base rate.
No.
So, well, I know, the names...
My point is, is you're using terms that are based on this administrative and governmental body. Tell me as a homeowner, what the heck that number is. I understand my water meter, I understand Steve has to have a whole bunch of stuff out there that operates, and I understand that I use water as it comes in. Those are the terms that I wanna see when you tell me I'm gonna pay a little bit more.
Be kind of individual scale instead of...
Yeah, base rate, yeah.
I mean, this is what I do for a living, actually, I do your magical spreadsheets, but I have to put it in simple terms for the audience that's getting charged.
Right.
And we use a lot of pictures, but the hardest thing is to be able to remember to put it in their terms. And I don't deal in sales, I wouldn't know what that meant. But, you could do a pie chart where it's kinda like, oh, you're $3.20 if you're gonna use that number.
You can just do this pie chart, this is what your bill, this portion is your water, this portion is your maintenance.
Yeah, but tell me when you say water, it's the water that you use versus the meter, which is really all of the infrastructure that gets you that water.
Yeah, yeah.
And I never thought about it in the term of, oh, it's all that stuff you're doing out there.
So, I said, infrastructure cost, and...
No.
No, okay.
What the heck is infrastructure cost to me?
Me, the cost to get the water to you.
I suppose you could say sewer plants, you know, pipes, and all the people that...
I got you, well, and I'm thinking, this is on the revenue, if that, if the big part of that pie was cut according to those two numbers on that magic sheet there.
I think that would be so much better.
Yeah, if I were to the $3.20.
Because I think if you want to see that part of the pie, that you're gonna glance at that and have it immediately.
Actually, you don't wanna pick the $3.20, you wanna pick your 10,000 gallon number, right?
Right, yeah, you wanna...
Because you keep wanting to draw me to that number, right? You wanna draw me to go and do the comparisons at 10,000 gallons.
The average bill.
Yes, put in there, the average, the average bill.
Highlight, highlight the 10,000 category, average bill.
Well, if that's their average, what's wrong with it?
We'll have the informational sheet, but also the statement of intent, which is prescribed by the ordinance, so, we need to page insert in your next water bill.
And that's where my postage goes.
For two pages.
Well, she's saying, she has to do the required verbiage that says the intent to do the bill, but then this other supplement.
In the intent, with the supplement, with the intent, you know, the intent to raise your rate is going to kick off a busy farm.
So, we're good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
You know what, we never went over this thing on the basis, contract services.
Really? I don't know the part I didn't...
You went over the one part.
That's what we talked about earlier.
Well, that was the only one I didn't understand. I understood the rest of it.
Engineering, engineering, I thought it was, well, I just didn't wanna say, go until I read through it.
Wait a minute, Frank did say that he was going to do that page over with a breakdown up at the top on the engineering general services, and so were the 14,000 laws.
So, it would be within the quotations, it would not just say engineering, it would say in half...
Half of the design for the public works building and that.
So, is the GL and AP K roll software, is that also a cross-charge? Are you just charging water and sewer for your monthly GL, AP software?
Well, the general ledger AP software, I mean, that does all the accounts, doesn't it? And so, that's a, that's a percentage of it.
Is it a percentage, or you just put 100% there?
Well, we share the cost pretty much half and half for it.
Did you put 100% in here?
There's nothing purely administrative though, but then, that number is greater than what you'll see on the admin side because of the e-billing and e-pay, which is just water.
Okay, but you gave water and sewer 100% of your software charge. It's not a cross-charge out of admin?
They pay, they pay half of the annual fee, and we pay half of it.
Okay, so it is a half.
Right, and then they pay their portion of the e-pay.
Okay, because you wouldn't expect to see GL, AP software charge in water and sewer.
Could add UBE.
Well, you just did cross-charges for the, for the admin time, so I was like, okay, it would be a cross-charge just like that, but that's fine, okay, that's it.
All right, so, we'll do a vote, but we're going to do the intent to change rates in the next month until you vote. Any opposition or any concerns?
Data that come out, I may need to go on vacation. I'm not joking.
I do wanna see the inserts before they go out.
Thanks.
Okay.
Well, yeah, because I wanna get, I wanna get it in terms of, you know, we wanna get it in terms of everybody is comfortable with seeing it.
I don't mind the message, I just wanna...
Don't kill the message.
I wanna get, yeah, I wanna, no, I wanna get it across. Because I'll be referring to the chart frequently. So, give me something like this. I'll have it on my phone, and I'll be going, let me send that to you.
I can go for all of this, if you can, thank you.
Okay, yes.
And thank you, Steve. And back to you, Lynn.
Yeah, I'm just, they just give me the numbers.
And I'm excited you're getting it.
I am too. I hate going down to the Department of Public Works, the secret you won't know, the agenda, and going in that, the old, it's got paper slapped everywhere.
What are you gonna do with $70?
It'll fall down.
I know, well, that's why I'm wondering.
That'll probably be the new city hall.
That was actually pretty funny.
Do we need a motion?
Yep, yeah.
Um, I can, Mary.
Well, I think if there's no more discussion, then, I mean, you got your statement.
Yes, we vote on this later, we don't vote on this tonight. Now, it's different discussion.
So, if there's no more discussion, we could adjourn.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for adjourn?
Let's, yeah, it's a privileged motion, we could just, just do it, I mean, if there's no opposition, or let's do a motion, is there anybody opposed to adjourn?
I make a motion, dear jury. So, I would cross the cheese and dot the i's. Suzanne, stick your hand up, stick that hand up, or we freeze the guy. Oh, and he seconded it, put it in the motion.
Thank you all. Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen.